Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the County Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting for October the 5th, 2023, at 7:02 PM. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
This guy's got water, he's got water in the background. What is going on?
Okay, um...
Florida.
Hold it all, starting on my left. Oh, whoa.
Dylan Willap, Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Nicole Lupo, Planning and Zoning Alternate.
Robert Westlin, Planning and Zoning Commissioner.
Bruno Mayini, Commissioner.
Leon Ambrosi, Commissioner.
Ryan Condon, Commissioner.
Dominic Smirglio, Alternate Commissioner.
Okay, then we don't need to seat anyone, correct?
Correct. It's dedication. I would not...
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Okay, we're gonna move on to general public participation. If anyone in the audience tonight, either in person or online, would like to address the commission on any matter that is not before the commission tonight, this would be the time to do that. Does anyone here that has a step of desire, raise your hand, come right up front. Please just name and address for the record to the microphone.
Kathleen Alderman, 343 Elm Street.
Okay.
Also 69 Pretty Hill Road. My problem I have at this time right now is we're being overdeveloped, getting very upset over it. We have AutoZone, it's gonna go in where the law firm used to be, right next to Monroe El. I don't understand how the traffic flow is gonna be. It's gonna be horrendous. How you guys approve something like that is beyond words. You have Monroe El, a ton of children, school buses, and you're gonna have another AutoZone. And when we have advanced auto across the street, the town does not look like Monroe. It's starting to look like Fairfield, Connecticut. I have a problem with it. Two, I read something today in the paper by Batar that he mentioned. Actually, I guess you guys were in participation with regards to some home that's on the other side of town, that's a beautiful colonial that has seven or eight acres, and whoever owns it, I guess, wants to demolish the home so that you guys can put 55 and older. I think it's a disgrace. The homeowner should keep his house, or sell it as is. There's nothing in the books where you can sit there and take a home, demolish it, and say, oh, let's make some money today and put a 55-year-old dwelling on it, okay? Now, the only one I heard in the paper was Rob Westlin saying, you know what, I think it's starting to ruin the town's aesthetics. He's right. Okay? My next issue is the other part of Chucky Bruce Road, there's 100 acres, and you guys wanna put 80 homes there to a piece of parcel that got completely ruined back in the day, which we all know, okay? Now, first off, I can't see 80 homes being built on 80 acres of land because the other 30 is wet from what I'm told, okay? And we don't even know about septic or anything above that goes on on that piece of parcel. Now, I was told by Leon Ambrosi last night that 20 acres, I mean, I'm sorry, that 20 years ago was approved for some housing development, but that was 20 years ago. And as I know, going into Town Monroe to get anything approved, anything that's over 20 years ago, you have to go back and redo everything all over again, perk tests, septic tests. Am I right or wrong?
Yes.
Okay, so that means that whole development is kiboshed because at this point, as far as I'm concerned, by looking at what I was reading with all the books that you have with regards to regulations and rules about building, I don't see how that's gonna get approved. Do you agree with me on that?
Well, they'll be here in the upcoming, so you'll have a chance to see what they have. We haven't seen it yet either.
Oh, okay.
Our job is just to apply the rules. We're not developing, we don't want...
Right, so can you tell them that? Did you read your own handbook?
They haven't come in front of us.
Yeah, hopefully they'll...
We can't say anything until they present, so I know what you said, a couple times, you said, "We're doing, we're not doing anything yet."
Well, they've given something to you, right?
Everything you mentioned hasn't been brought in front of it, right? We didn't approve it. Yeah, we didn't approve. That's, I think there are projects that are being discussed out by the property owners because they're the ones that decide what they wanna do with their property.
Right.
They then have to come in front of us in a public hearing where the public will get to speak, and then we would look at the books and then decide, oh, you can or can't do this.
Okay, great. So with regards, let's start with AutoZone for a second. You guys also...
It's not in front of us.
We haven't seen any of the information on it yet.
Well, it's been in the paper.
We, we're not allowed to make decisions based on, no offense to Bill Batar, but stuff written in the paper or on Facebook.
You can put anything you want in the paper. That doesn't mean it's come in front of us and we've approved it.
It's gotta be an official...
Pretend it was going to be...
We don't play in the pretend world.
Okay, so it's enough for that to sit in every meeting because it doesn't get approved.
Yes.
All right, AutoZone, check, next one.
Okay. Like I said to you, until plans come in front of us...
Right.
And it's in front of this commission, that's when we deliberate on it, that's when we make the decision if AutoZone's gonna come or not AutoZone's not gonna come.
Okay.
And that's what happens. But before then, we don't make any decisions here until those plans.
Okay.
It all has to be done out in the open.
Well, in front of us, so it all has to be out.
Has that been approved yet?
No.
Social Center?
Or Social Center?
I don't even know what you're talking about.
I was told by the, I was told that Town Monroe needs a beautiful athletic center, let's call it athletic center, where we have someone that can play pickleball and have their kids have a birthday party indoors for the winter. I won't say the person's name, but when I was told this, I was like, you expect taxpayers in Monroe, hear me out, taxpayers in Monroe, to basically buy St. Jude's, hold on, buy St. Jude's to actually build a pickleball center and throw some birthday parties for your kids on my dollar? I don't think so. I think that's ridiculous, okay? And if you're gonna build it, what happened to Chalk Hill? Do something there. Why don't you, tons of land back there, right? We own the building.
Okay, well, thank you for your opinion, but none of that's before us now. Keep your eyes on the agendas, and we'll welcome you back when each of these items come up.
So the last one I'm gonna bring up is how do you think this, I don't know the code of the number of the law of our book right now, but there's a part in the book that says you want, it's required to have at least 10 acres of land in order to have a senior community.
That's not changing.
That's, that's not changing because I, what I...
Yeah, if you would've been at the subcommittee meeting on Monday, you would've, you would've realized that every...
I saw it in the paper that it was not...
But that was everybody.
Yeah, that was everything. That was the only thing I can say I'm grateful for right now.
Well, you're welcome.
Okay.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay.
So anyone else here that would like to address the commission on other, any items? Anyone online for general public participation? Seeing none. We'll move on to public hearings. First public hearing tonight is RAA 2023-10, 588 Pepper Street.
The, yes. Planning and Zoning Commission, Monroe, Connecticut, notice of public hearing to be held October 5th, 2023. In accordance with CGS 8-7D, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, October 5th, 7:00 PM, or soon thereafter via hybrid Zoom meeting with in-person attendees located in Monroe Town Hall. RAA 2023-10, File 1033E, 588 Pepper Street. Petition for regulation amendment to amend the zoning regulation, Section 2.2.1, 10.1 and 10.2, to create sorting and handling facility use within the industrial II zone, III zone, Solely Engineering LLC applicant. Notice was published in voices on September 20th and September 27th.
Thank you, Commissioner Condon. Dylan, is there application up to date?
Everything's in order, Mr. Condon.
Thank you. And for the other gentleman?
Good evening, members of the commission. For the record, my name's Kevin Solley. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Solely Engineering, offices located right here in Monroe at 501 Maitre. First, some green cards for the, um, for the notices.
Wow, there's something to handle that one.
The notice requires part of regulation amendment to the, um, um... So, um, we're here this evening to talk about a proposed regulation amendment to provide very minor amendments to the zoning regulations. Um, this is an application that we actually brought forward to the subcommittee, you had a group of meetings, my staff, and I'm here tonight for a formal application. So, uh, the proposed regulation, I'm not sure if we can put the presentation up on the screen. So, what is being proposed this evening is to modify Sections 3.2.1, uh, 10.1 and 10.2 of the Monroe zoning regulations, and it's, uh, with the intent to create a new use and some, you can surround that use as part of the regulation. This is a use that's allowed, that would propose to be allowed in the III district, and we created some constraints associated with those uses, just to familiarize everybody. Uh, so this is zoning map of Town Monroe, and the III zone is primarily located to the north of Pepper Street. This is, uh, remember 25, run this north-south along his side, and Pepper Street obviously does the loop. Um, the III zones are primarily around Pepper Street Business Park, this location here, so just north of Pepper Street. Um, our proposed regulation amendment isn't, uh, doesn't pertain to a specific property, it's a, it's a proposal regulation to the overall regulations. However, we will talk this evening, if this application is viewed favorably, we will be bringing in an application for property. I'll just touch on that because we always like to be transparent with our applications. We don't want to, want the commission to understand what the intent is. So what we're, what we're, first part of the regulations we're modifying is to create a new definition for assorting and handling facility. Um, and so the proposed language is shown in bold and underlined, so facility for the intake, handling, separation, and export, various CTD defined construction demolition materials. Um, and then within Section 10.1, it's scheduled permitted land use, we're proposing to add that sorting and handling facility as a special exception use in the III district. So we would be adding this line to this table, and it would be only allowed as a special exception in the III. We also have a caveat note number six, which is addressed later on in the table. And then what we're doing is we're adding this number six here, and what that does is use is limited to lots, zone industrial, issue two, with a minimum of three acres. Maximum building size for the use is less than or equal to 20,000 square feet. Operation must occur within a building as defined by these regulations. So what we're proposing is to create the use as a definition, but then put restrictions in place where it would only be allowed to be pursued on sites that were over three acres, and it would not allow to have a building over 20,000 square feet, and it would not, um, uh, and any activity would have to take place entirely within an enclosed building. Um, we also added a parking requirement for this used sorting and handling facility of one parking space per, um, per employee, um, and that would be, uh, you know, consistent parking requirement for this type of use. Just to kind of touch on, what if this commission does view this application favorably, we'd be coming into the formal application for special exception use. At 588 Pepper Street, um, this commission is probably familiar with it, this is where A&amp;B Mechanical, uh, it's a longstanding Monroe business. They operate out of their front building here, uh, they have for, for quite some time. Um, the proprietor of A&amp;B Mechanical, um, uh, longtime Monroe business owner and contributor to the community, recently came before this commission and received approval to construct a parking lot to the rear of his building. Um, we had fully approved plans, we had a pre-construction meeting, and he started to, uh, to construct that work. What we would be proposing, addition to A&amp;B Mechanical, he started a business called A&amp;B Hallway, and this is essentially a place where you can rent dumpsters. Um, I actually have one in my driveway right now, um, and it's for regular household debris, but it could also be used for a construction site. Uh, what this, what this regulation amendment would allow would be to him to create a facility in a building where he'd be able to bring his dumpsters back to his property entirely within the building, sort that material inside the building entirely within the building, and then, um, and you know, material sorted and then brought out of the facility in trucks and covers in accordance with all DEEP regulations. Um, some of the provisions that we created in terms of the size restrictions for a building is really to minimize and ensure that the use is not something that, uh, you know, would exceed, you know, a normal operation. There are certainly some facilities that could be larger, that's not a problem. Put some restrictions in place, so that's why we limited that to a 20,000 square feet and to have it be only allowed on lots that are, that are three acres in size or larger. Um, this type of facility would have additional permitting requirements with the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, um, so those would be, there are obviously additional provisions and parameters established regarding the operations, but simply this step, this application here is simply for the commission to consider allowing this use to even come before you for a formal special exception permit application. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions as the commission may have.
Okay, I'm gonna start on my left.
No questions right now.
So, Kevin, I do, I just don't mind this, um, more of my questions will be, um, so with the, with the handling facility that you're calling it, are we, are we listing materials that we can and cannot handle?
So that would come in as part of a special exception permit application. This, what we did is we established a use or a definition, kept that definition somewhat consistent with how it is defined by Connecticut general statutes and the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. As part of a formal special exception permit, if we get past this step, that's where we would have the in-depth discussion about specific materials, and since it is a special exception permit, this commission can put additional conditions and restrictions on how this facility could operate.
And the way you're writing this up, this goes with every, this will go with somebody else wanted to do another handling facility within the III district. It's all gonna fall under the same umbrella, correct?
It, it would apply to all lots in the III district, however, what we did is, is we created some restrictions in terms of the size of a building at 20,000 square feet.
Right, but anything that, anything that falls within those parameters have to follow this?
Correct, that's correct.
Just to be very clear.
Yes.
Uh, because these facilities actually could be very, they're actually more beneficial to the, this kind of... Great, that would tax revenue and all that kind of stuff, but this is kind of more beneficial to the actual person who's doing the handling. This is totally all their benefit. It really doesn't benefit us as a, as a town per se, minus the tax revenue, right? It's not like, uh, opening up a store and we go buy goods or whatever. Um, so we, these are, some of these get a little tricky, and especially with some of the stuff that they're handling, or they potentially could be handling, is where it gets a little, a little scary. Uh, we see what happens when misinformation gets out into the public, you know what I mean? And people think things are happening that aren't. These are, these are one of the major things when you talk about a handling facility. Well, what are you handling? What's coming in? What's going out? Is it coming in from a different, a different company bringing it into them to handle or that kind of stuff? So, um, we just gotta, we gotta, we gotta be careful as a, as a board to, uh, if this is something we really want. And this is what I discussed with, with the gentleman from AB when, when he came to the subcommittee.
Correct. And I think making it a special exception permit and putting these additional, you know, options.
Helps.
It allows this commission to view an application and put all those conditions on that, to protect against that. I can tell you that, you know, our client is looking to, this is simply for the, for his operation, this isn't something where he would accept.
No, I under, I understand that, but, but I also know this business because I have a, I have a very good friend that's in it, and it's, it's difficult. If this gentleman, and I don't know how many containers he's moving a day, but to, to build a facility that you're saying of 20,000 square feet... I know they have a maximum amount of garbage that they could have within, or debris, let's say, that they could have within their facility, and then it comes to a point where they have to stop taking because they have to start moving, right? There, there's a lot to it, it's not a, it's not, it's not very, it's not a simple thing. But if you're not moving a ton of debris with your own dumpster, so if he's not moving 20, 30 cans a day almost, um, it's almost hard to make money at that business. But I understand why he's doing it because he wants to cut out that middleman to ship, so he cuts out that, I get it. But it, there's also, there's also a cost to having a building and equipment and all that kind of stuff too. Uh, I know we're far away from that, but, but we have to, we have to be wary of stuff like this. That's all I have. Kevin, so as part of the regulation, I think we would have to require a man or something or stuff, no?
Something that's gonna cover us, or function us.
We can certainly look at that as, as...
Yeah, because I mean, I understand, because what you're saying, he came to the sub, I mean, we discussed this in real depth about what he was gonna do, but I'm just afraid of somebody coming along and doing something else. So I think we need to tighten them up a little bit more somehow, just a little bit.
In the, in, at this step, or in a, in a special step?
At this step, to require, it's like, either, because we don't want any contaminated soil coming to here, we don't want it coming off the site that's contaminated.
Of course.
Right, so we'd have to get something, make sure that we're covered. I mean, just add that into the regulations somehow.
Sure, sure, we can certainly look at that, see if we can add, uh, add some additional language regarding that.
Not to interrupt, but does that get covered in the SEP though, or no?
I, I think technically it would, and I think that's where...
I just don't, like, I agree with Leon a hundred percent, but I don't know...
...come into play, um, and it's a little bit challenging to, you know, um...
I'm just saying, if somebody else comes in, okay, and we deny it, it goes to court. There's already one out there. I wanna make sure that there's some standards that we go with that say that this is coming materially over.
Well, and I, and I think that's where that special tip...
Wow, I've never heard that before, man.
Oh, Rob's hands raised, you probably didn't let him talk.
Yeah, yeah, Rob's... He's next, he's next.
He's finished.
All right.
I bet it's him calling her.
Yes.
Should I say hello?
Is it my turn?
No. Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Whoa, is that Rob?
No, I don't know.
Oh, that was you.
I wasn't calling.
Oh.
I'm good for right now.
Okay, Commissioner Westlin.
That was it first.
Oh, he was on it?
I've heard that. You're off. I'm just turning down the volume.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't think I'm doing anything to make that, uh, that go off, but, um, so we did, uh, discuss this at length in subcommittee, and I feel like we went over a lot of the strong points, and I feel like things have got in, um, watered down a little bit for this initial, uh, meeting here, but, you know, some of my thoughts, uh, that are coming to mind are that the sorting materials, you know, would need to be named, and the language of this approval would need to be carefully selected because we don't want this to run into a, um, a recycling or, or junkyard-type facility, and that's what I think we all heard about. Um, so the language would need to be outlined very carefully. Now, my understanding is that this was gonna be materials that were used by A&amp;B only, and no other materials were gonna be brought on into the sorting facility, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, and then the other important part, uh, was that, you know, we're, I was very concerned about having, uh, as we discussed a lot of times, when these dumpsters are picked up, um, you know, other people will throw whatever in dumpsters because they know that they're just gonna be taken away and they're not gonna have anybody sorting through on the premise typically. So a lot of times, you know, paint cans and fuel and propane tanks and all kinds of other undesirables get thrown into these containers. Um, so, you know, having separators on site and other compliances, uh, need to be met as, you know, health and environmental concerns are paramount, and that can get run, you know, that can, uh, yeah, a huge problem if that's not put in place upfront. Um, so I would like some, at the very least, initial oversight as to how this is working in order to make it, you know, start off on the right track and make sure that all of our health and environmental concerns are met.
Of course, and I think that would certainly be spelled out as part of a special exception permit, and it'd also be spelled out in an additional permit that would be required by the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. Um, but, but I can, you know, hearing your concerns, Commissioner Westlin and Commissioner Ambrosi's concerns, we can certainly look to see if we wanna add some additional language to what's proposed this evening, you know, in advance of a, of a future hearing, to try to address some of these concerns with this language. Again, I think it's, the primary strength comes through that special exception process, that the commission gets to really pore over what's being proposed, um, and establish some of those conditions where we can certainly, you know, maybe, uh, propose, you know, offer some additional supplemental language that we should consider with this application.
You know, A&amp;B Mechanical, you know, is, is a, um, is a great, great local business, they're expanding, they're trying to, you know, create more profitability for their company and streamline things, more efficiencies, which I can appreciate, and I, I don't have any, um, concerns or reservations that they're, they're ill-intended on this, but I do want this spelled out properly, uh, in order to get my nod, and that's all I have.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Ambrosi, you got it.
So, and also in the regulation, there's no outside?
Yes. It, 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 that, it does, that is included in this, um, you know, Section 6, but, you know, I think perhaps what we can do is we can create additional supplemental section in addition to different portion of the regulations that would govern these requirements, and we can provide that in advance of the next one.
Okay.
But yes, all the activity is intended to be inside, um, yes.
Commissioner Condon?
I'm pretty much in agreement with what's been said about editing the language at this juncture, uh, if we can, to, you know, promote health and safety, but also, uh, maybe even at the end of the line before with the definition where you say, uh, CTD materials, maybe even just put upon review of the commission or something along those lines, just so it's written there, so then when, you guys will be fine, but when the next people come and they go, oh yeah, we want this, and they're not shocked when we're like, well, we need to see a list, just so they know upfront. That's all.
I share, oh, thank you. Um, I share the same concerns as most of the other commissioners. Um, in addition, you know, this type of facility is gonna create a lot of large truck traffic, a lot of dump trucks coming in, you know, making a mess, you know, there's a potential for contamination and a lot of noise. Um, I just see more of a downside to this type of facility. Um, and we could put all the regulations we want in, but in reality, how can we really know that it's being followed? That's all.
Thank you. Um, can you put the definition back up? So this is, that's a terrible definition, that's not gonna fly. Um, when you come in with your SEP, the first thing you're gonna do is point to that definition and say various CTD defined construction demolition materials. That could be radioactive material, that could be asbestos, that could be anything on God's earth that you're bringing in there. So that has to change, first of all. And would, you're gonna have to let us know what you wanna bring in there that specifically is defined by DEEP. So, um, they, they probably have that, what do they have, construction demolition debris definition? Do they have, I know they have a clean fill definition, which we all love.
Yeah, I love that one.
They, they, they do, and actually, these types of facilities with DEEP, there's, I think there's maybe seven or eight categories. We're, we're, our intent is to keep this very limited and only apply to one of those categories, and actually, in those categories, there are different, um, levels of permits you can get, which allow for certain volumes. The 20,000 square foot building restriction pigeonholes this type of application into one of those smaller volume categories, um, and I think we can certainly, as you said, bolster up this definition to better reinforce...
We need to know what specific product, going under which specific definition from CTD, we're even talking about before we go any further.
And for, like, you said, there's different sections, Kevin, of the deep, right?
There are.
So why don't you give us that section and...
You can do that.
...and household debris. So now this company will be renting out dumpsters to me.
Yes.
And, so there's no limit, there's no, there's no, nobody knows what I'm gonna put into that. So restricting it to this company doesn't really help at all.
Well, there are...
Because they can put their dumpster anywhere, they can get their dumpster...
If you were, so, uh, my, uh, we, we rented a dumpster. We've been, all three of my children got on the bus for the first time this year, our third kid, so we, we cleaned out a lot of our, a lot of our stuff, so we have a dumpster in my driveway. When, when you rent a dumpster from anybody, there are certain, you know, you're only, you're not allowed to put anything. And if you, as someone, rents a dumpster, fills it with stuff that it's not supposed to be in there, there's a, there's a contractual relationship with the provider that... to be in there, there's a, there's a contractual relationship with the provider that there's, there's mechanism to pursue something like that. You know, but, so the intent obviously is to provide the protections. I think we can, I think we can certainly provide some additional language to what's being proposed to hopefully try to capture.
I get a lot of dumpsters for, for what I do, and we're not like, you're not allowed to put like, like.
Like propane tanks, paint.
They're not checking them before they pick it up.
Oil.
They check, so they'll check before they leave.
Yeah, and they actually, I've had, I've had, you know, I've done a roof on a house, and then next thing you know, you know, we're done, and we're leaving.
Somebody drives by.
Somebody, even the homeowner. They're like, oh, I just got to, I got these old things that I can throw away. And, you know, listen, are they going, are they jumping in the dumpster and going through every bit of it? No, but if it's on top and it's like tires or, or gas or paint, they, they have to take, they take them out.
But there is a possibility of this stuff still going to make it through the door, it's going to hit, it's going to hit the intake and the handling.
You're 100% correct, but there's, there's also, when you sign up to get a dumpster, there's also provisions there that say you cannot have that, you can't do that, this in there.
But it still happens.
Of course, yeah. I buy something in a dumpster.
There are provisions, but people have thrown everything in there, they've covered it up with the stuff.
For sure.
Put it on the bottom and.
But that's also, you know, any rule, put it out there, and it can only be enforced to.
That was the question for Dan, is how are we going to enforce what's going in there?
Well, so the operators themselves will have, will have an obligation to, to, you know, it comes in, inside the facility, it's sorted, anything that would come in that's untoward is, is handled differently, treated differently, it's brought back out differently. And then, you know, the protection measures we can put in place from having that only inside a secure building, you know, to ensuring that some of those are concerned, we can certainly, we can create some language that should hopefully address those concerns.
Household debris is, or.
Yes.
Is that kosher?
That would come, yeah, they, again.
Garbage then, trash would be able to go into these dumpsters and be processed.
Yes, yes.
Vegetable matter.
Yeah.
Diapers. Now, what's going out, now that we talked about, we don't know what's going in, anything going, what's going out?
Everything goes out.
How does it go out?
It goes out in.
I can understand ferrous metals, let's say, he's going to sell them, or copper, he's going to, what are the, what are the other?
There are.
Things that go out, and how do they go out, where do they go?
They, they go out in covered trucks, and they go to different facilities where they're either incinerated or, or, or something else, you know.
Need to know more about that.
Yeah, we can certainly provide more information on that. I, you know, I, I don't know enough about it to tell you the, the true path from start to finish, but we can certainly provide that information.
So he has to have contacts or contract.
Of course.
People that will pick up a number of items, tiles.
Actually, I don't think they, he's not proposing that they pick up, he's proposing.
No, he would, he would.
He's following himself.
He'd follow it out, yes.
He's going to bring it into the facility, but someone's going to take it out of the facility.
He is.
That's the export.
Exporting. He's exporting.
Yeah.
He exports to you who own a metal company, and he exports his metal to you. You don't go pick it up, he brings it to you.
So everything is.
He sorts it.
He ships.
He sorts it and then exports it out, correct?
But, but you're right, because that's what he's doing, but that doesn't say that, that, that doesn't say that in the regulation that everything going forward is done that way.
Which we can do.
You know what I'm saying? So if you want to open up one of these, it doesn't in here say that you have to export, you have to sort it, export it. It could easily say that I show up with my truck to your facility, and you load me up. That becomes a different dynamic.
Right.
So what you're saying is correct.
Except. This is getting ahead of this, but it's, he already has these trucks on this property, right?
He has, he has storage on this property. But anytime, like, so I fill the dumpster in my drive, I'll take that dumpster down to a facility in Bridgeport or Stratford.
Be dumped there.
Then we'll come out with it.
What is it, the same, are all his, is his fleet stored on this property already?
Well, that was part of the approval that was already received.
Yeah. Okay, so he already has that, so right, so approving this and moving forward, same amount of vehicles, maybe more trips, but it should be the.
No.
Not actually.
More trips.
Could there be more trips or less?
Or vehicles, because he needs, he needs probably a bigger truck to, he's not going to take a small dump truck and ship that out to Pennsylvania to a dump facility. He's going to need a tri-axle of some sort, fill that up and ship that out. He's not taking a little dump truck.
Yeah.
That would make no sense.
Well, ma'am, you got to wait until the public part.
We can, we can certainly provide some more details on.
So it's going to be more, more equipment, he's going to need loaders, he's going to need that, separators, he's going to need more equipment, but that's, again, that's not.
Not, yeah, again, get.
And storage as well, like you were saying, when, he's probably not going to have enough ferrous metals in one week to.
Everything would have to.
It's going to have to be stored.
In a building.
So all storage will be in the building also?
There wouldn't be, uh, uh, dumps would come in, it would be emptied in the building, it would be sorted in the building, it would be loaded in the building.
Container storage.
Correct. You'd contain a bin inside the facility.
What could it contain to be outside of the building?
That we wouldn't, we are not proposing any storage of any of this material outside of the building. It may be an empty.
Truck.
A half-full truck?
No.
I mean, I can just see 10 half-full trucks parked.
Yeah.
Waiting to be filled and slowly being filled up.
I don't think the, the, if, if we were proposing an 80,000 square foot facility, there could be a chance for that, and if it was a facility that was serving.
20,000 square feet for garbage is small.
Things like that. This is, this is for, this, what we're proposing is limited to only operator stuff, so.
So we don't know what he's planning on dividing, pulling out of this stuff that comes in.
Well, everything that comes in has to be sorted and disposed of somewhere.
But, but you can't sort everything.
It, they, well, there's a category for a, yes. Now, now, there, it may.
I think we're missing something.
Well, 65% of it could just be trash, where it's just then getting taken to a dump.
Right.
So that, that could be.
I'd like to know what.
He's going to pull out, because the metal and tram is.
Sure, and, and a lot of that.
Plan on getting 10% recycled, that's how, and then 90% of it's going to just go to the dump. Is that what we're talking about? I don't really understand.
A lot of that's detailed in the, in the permit that would be needed, but, in terms of product material.
Right, but we have to approve it here first, so I, I want to know first.
It's that.
I also don't want this to become a crushing facility. You're not going to have a crusher. Well, I mean, because the term handling, what does that mean? Is that going to be?
Well, we already approved indoor crushing, which we haven't seen work.
Yeah.
I mean, he's probably going to have, like, again, we're far away from this, but he's probably going to have a machine that.
Hydraulic press or something.
Correct, you load metal into it, and it squeezes into a big cube, right?
Yeah.
A ton of metal, squeeze it up into a little.
Yeah, that's kind of the stuff we're going to need to know.
Yeah.
Because we can't put up a definition until a little more information on the other end, even though it's not required at this point.
So, R D Jones may be happy to come and discuss this with the commission, give you a lot more of those, you know, specifics, but I think in the meantime, we can certainly prepare much more, stronger.
Defined.
That can be, that can be considered.
Awesome.
I don't think this, I think we can figure it out.
Yeah.
That's a manageable problem. All right, any other questions from the commissioners before we go to the public? Okay, is there anyone here tonight that would like to comment on this specific application? If so.
You just got to come up to the mic.
Come up and please address the commission, not the applicant.
Okay.
Anything you want to say is to us.
I have one question, because to me it was very vague.
Go ahead.
And I wanted to.
Oh, yeah, just say name and address.
I have one question.
Nothing, go ahead.
I started, he mentioned that he was asking for an approval, if I understood this correctly, to change the bylaws of our code, correct, to basically anybody after that can do whatever they follow with the new guidelines that he's proposing. And I think that's a little strange for me, because I'm thinking, can't you do, instead of changing the bylaws, can't you just approve, let's say if you were willing to approve him, just approve him only? It doesn't work that way?
It doesn't work that way.
It doesn't work that way.
No, it doesn't.
Okay, so my next question then is, the whole thing is very vague of what he's mentioning, and it just seems like, okay, it sounds like garbage disposal area. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
And to me.
He hears the whole time.
Okay, and to, great, so to me, it sounds like a, a facility that's going to possibly have biohazards, and it's very close to town, like Dom said, a lot of trucks going in and out. We don't know, 20,000 is not that big, but it reminds me of city carding in Stanford. Do you ever see that building off the train line? It's about 20,000 square feet, I assume, and it's pretty stacked with a bunch of crap, and you got to hold those around there. But it, it just sounds like a garbage dump. This is what it sounds like to me. And I'm a little worried, sorry.
Thank you.
Especially with the Fairfield thing that happened with, you know, in the past with illegal dumping.
Hey, thank you for your comments. Anyone else here tonight that would like to comment on this application? If there's anyone online that'd like to comment on this application, just raise your hand. Okay, Cindy, Cindy, you see somebody? Okay, then back to the applicants.
So, thank you, you know, we appreciate the consideration tonight and the comments and the discussion, it's certainly very helpful for us. What we'll do is we'll prepare some additional materials in the next meeting.
Thank you.
All right, so we're going to close this, we're going to continue this hearing at this point. We do have another public hearing, R A.
No, you're leaving it open, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Continue.
Next application is going to be tabled for tonight, R A 2023-09. The articles, the text amendments need a little bit more work, so we'll be looking at them again in, hopefully in two weeks.
Correct, just, just to clarify, council hasn't reviewed all four of these items. They've only reviewed two of them thus far, so we want to just wait for them to have the floor, have a resolution put together.
Have we opened this hearing? The, I think, is it still technically open or no?
I don't think we have opened.
Text amendments?
We never opened it because we're still working on it in subcommittee up until Monday. I just want to back this up.
So does it have, it has to go out and be posted again? In voices before we even, so would we have not have even?
Is it posted now?
I don't have anything.
Okay.
Which is why I think we did open it, but then we.
We're still working on it in subcommittee.
I know, but we had originally.
I, I don't know.
We talked about the kitchen and wet bar, so we did open it, but I think we.
Have an open meeting at the.
Did open. I think it's still open. You just added some more stuff, because we had talked about it in the meeting.
I'm just saying, are we allowed to? Open a hearing? Talk about it more in subcommittee and then still have an.
Yes.
For text amendments, yeah. The only thing, we can't vote, we can't make any final decisions, but the reason I bring it up is technically it's a public hearing, so I think if anyone wanted to, was here and wanted to, we still have to open public participation today, even if we don't talk about it, right? Technically.
It's closed, it's not.
It's not closed.
Yeah, I know, but it's not being, nothing's being heard.
Because it was on the agenda, don't, I'm just.
But nothing's being heard.
No, I think we could.
If a public wanted to talk, would we have to let them?
All right, cool.
I don't know if anyone's here to talk about the text.
You want to talk about just?
Um, text amendments.
Read the, the text amendment.
So there's a text, so these are the proposed amendments. So Article One, add section 1.9.2.1 F, portable storage unit for portable on-demand pod containers. Article Two, definitions by adding a new definition to kitchen slash wet bar. Article Five, which is special district, section 5.4.2, part C, minimum parcel size, it's just a correction in language. Article Ten, section 10.1, update the use table to permit child, family, group daycare homes and residential zones in accordance with Public Act 23-142.
Yeah, I read that about the school name.
There we go.
So we're not going to discuss this, so let's move on.
None of those are getting approved, are they?
Nothing tonight, it's being tabled till next meeting.
Okay.
All right, we don't have any pending deliberations. We have any new applications, Dylan?
Nope.
We do have meeting minutes.
Let's do it.
Nine seven and nine twenty-one, should have both sets of minutes in front of you. Chair, turn a motion to accept the minutes of September the seventh as drafted.
I'll make a motion to accept the meetings of September seventh as drafted.
Have a motion? You need a second?
Second for Ambrose.
Motion and a second?
I won't second that.
Okay, it's a discussion.
I would just like to say these are very nicely written minutes, thank you for taking our concerns into account when writing these. I know we had some issues with previous minutes, so this is very nice.
Well, my name's not in it enough, that's the only issue I have.
So for the minutes of September the seventh, I'll call the roll, starting on my left.
Westland, yes.
Maene, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Ambrose, yes.
Condon, yes.
Okay, that, minutes of September the seventh are passed as drafted. We have next minutes of September the 21st, 2023 regular meeting.
Me and, me and Rob were absent for this one.
That's just this.
Wow.
Okay, Chair, one, ten, motion to accept.
Are you going to, you're not going?
You don't need to see, for minutes, I think we can just, you can just abstain.
Free of you animals?
Yeah, you can just abstain.
I'm just not going to say anything.
A motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of September 21st, 2023 as drafted.
And a second.
And Brozy's second.
Okay, so we have just three of us?
Yep.
Okay, I'll call the roll, O'Reilly, yes.
Brozy, yes.
Condon, yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Technically, Nicole and Dom were seated that day. You could have, you could have, you could have had them vote if you needed to, but you don't need it anyway, so. Why am I talking?
All right, we have a principal bond reduction, C P 2018, they're 3025 Monroe Turnpike, 205 Monroe Turnpike. And I have a letter from.
It's 205.
Okay, can we get a summary till then?